One is 2016-02, pardon my pronunciation, I'll say Wien, 136, 138 East Sunnyside Lane, and the second one is Donardo Capital Corp., 2016-05. Sarah, is everybody up to date?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, 2016-02 Wien, does anyone here for that? Nobody? I think we did have though, maybe we have a letter, a memo from Con Engineering. And I think the only outstanding item, Doug, is that the floor area ratio exceeds the permitted, and so a variance is needed.
Correct.
But everything else was all right with the site plan?
Yes.
And Ed, did you have any comments on this?
No, we're set.
No? Any comments from any of the board members? Any comments from anyone in the public regarding that? No? If not, then Mary, do you have a resolution then?
I appear to have a resolution. In January 2016, Juan Yen applied for site development plan approval to expand an existing two-family house to the rear over an existing concrete patio and deck at 136 and 138 East Sunnyside Lane, which lies in the village's two-family zoning district. The proposed addition would exceed the F A R limitation and would therefore require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. The plans originally submitted showed activity within the floodplain and water course buffer, which activity was pulled out of those areas in revised plans. Con Engineering raised a number of issues which were addressed to high satisfaction in the revised submission. The planning board held a public hearing on the application tonight as a type-two under secret, resolved if the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings and title petitions and alterations. And the sheets are specified, subject to the applicants receiving a variance for F A R from the zoning board of appeals.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second? Any further discussion by any board members? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No?
I guess we can sign it now.
We'll show up. You probably didn't expect.
Want to get them? Sorry, item number two on the agenda this evening is 2016-05 Donardo Capital Corp., 30 South Broadway.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zerrin Steinmetz. Please be back before all of you. Glad to be here tonight, representing Donardo Development Corp. With me this evening, Joe Donardo, Anthony Guccione, Juan Esrada from J M C, my partner, David Cooper. And I think you all know we are here in connection with both 30 South Broadway and the McCon House at 40 South Broadway. So I'm going to take a step back, I'm going to try to be very brief, and then we're going to walk through with J M C the plans. We're here in connection with a proposed multifamily residential project on these two lots. Joe originally did an analysis when he first secured control of the property, having an image of what he wanted to achieve here. He wanted to be able to generate multifamily housing consistent with the market, attractive for the area, desirable in the area, and also at the same time be able to provide some affordable housing. Obviously, very clear to Joe that affordable housing units could be something that would be desirable for the village. So the first thing that Joe did was have J M C conduct a site capacity analysis on the property to determine the yield of the number of residential units that he could get. And that site capacity analysis demonstrated a yield of 31 residential units. Unfortunately, the coverage in the M F zone, and I think you're all very well aware of this, but I want to start with that. The coverage in the M F zone was 10 percent. So essentially, he determined, we determined as a development team, we could build a monolithic, single apartment-style-type multifamily building on the center of the property. And we could put 31 units in it conceivably. That was something that was not attractive to my client from a development standpoint, from a marketing standpoint, was not what we think the image of Irvington multifamily housing is in 2015, now 16. And we wanted to take a better look at the situation. So as a team, one of the things we did was look at your other multifamily residential developments in the community. And we were kind of surprised, to some extent, to see that an awful lot of multifamily development in Irvington did not comply with some of these requirements that existed in the code, about 10 percent coverage, 60-foot building-to-building separation. So we decided we would propose amendments to the code. You know, we have spent the better part of 2015 working with the Board of Trustees under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and New York State Village Law. We're very pleased that the Board of Trustees adopted some fairly moderate zoning text amendments. We did not get everything that we wanted, but I think we achieved a wonderful compromise that now allows Donardo to develop 27 residential, multifamily residential units. 25 up top on the 30 South Broadway, the fee property, and two residential units in the existing home down below on 40. So we're here tonight to begin now the site plan review process. I know we have gotten some comments from your professional staff, and we're looking forward to beginning to work through those. We obviously are interested to see how all of you react. We have tried to achieve a number of things that the Board of Trustees asked us to deal with during their review. We were asked to take a very close look at creating some open green space, some functional open space on the property. We tried to create adequate perimeter buffers. We tried to, and we do respect the 125-foot Broadway buffer. And with the help of what I think are the wonderful design team that the Donartos hired, we think we have a high-quality, wonderful residential project. I'm sure there's work that needs to be done. I'm sure you all have thoughts and suggestions. I know certainly we've seen some initially. But what we were hoping to do, Mr. Chairman, tonight is walk you through those plans, give you a sense of how they evolved, share with you a video that we don't believe we ever displayed to the planning board. We know we shared it with the Board of Trustees, and I think some of you might have been there the night we were doing this for the Board of Trustees, but we want to do that for your board. So we have a presentation, and then we're happy to begin the site plan review process with all of you. I should mention that as a result of being able to achieve 27 multifamily residential dwelling units, we were also able to achieve a total number of... Good to see you. We were able to achieve six affordable housing units. Four up top in one duplex side-by-side building, and two down below in the 40 South Broadway building. We believe this is, the actual area or square footage of the affordables actually somewhat exceeds what would otherwise be required. We're delighted we were able to get six units in a 27-unit project, and we were certainly pleased to see the way it laid out. So we're excited about the affordability component. We're excited about the product that we think can be generated here in this high-end, wonderful multifamily residential project. We love the fact that we have proximity to the village with walkability, proximity to the aqueduct. For those of you that have been on the property, it's literally walk into the backyard, open the gate, and you're on the aqueduct property and a wonderful short walk to the downtown. So we have an attractive kind of T O D-oriented property, and we think our project lends itself very well to what we're proposing.
What's the T O D?
A T O D transportation-oriented development. So we're going to walk you through the site plan and a video, and look forward to your comments. One last thing before Anthony Guccione starts. I should mention that procedurally, one of the things that we were hoping to accomplish tonight is to get referred by your board to the Architectural Review Board for... I feel like I'm at a bad dinner party where the doorbell just keeps going. So I apologize. It's just distracting. In order to achieve lawful coverage under the zoning as adopted by the Board of Trustees, I'm sure you're all familiar with a provision that does say we would need a determination from the Architectural Review Board about the historical context or the historical character of one of the structures, i.e. the 40 South Broadway structure, in order to exclude that structure from being measured for coverage purposes. So we want to start the process here this evening, as we are. We want to walk through the development, discuss issues, and begin to analyze the project with you. But we would like, with your consent, to then go to the Architectural Review Board and deal with this, I guess, threshold, somewhat procedural, but threshold issue out of the box, so that we don't waste your time or ours, and we make sure we check that box, hopefully, and address that issue. So I'm going to turn it over to Anthony.
Everybody see that okay?
Can you use the microphone please?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Anthony Guccione. I am an associate principal at the firm J M C. I'll take you through the site plan. As David was saying, the property consists of two lots. The upper lot is 40, is 30 South Broadway, and the lower lot is 40 South Broadway. Those lots are 4.6 acres in size, the upper lot, and 1.2 acres in size is the lower lot, for a total of 5.8 acres. The property is located in the M F multifamily zoning district, where the proposed use is permitted. The portions of the site to be developed are quite flat up on the top of the property. And the lower portion of the property is flat. There is some sloping property along South Broadway and along the border of the two properties. As David said, the applicant is proposing 27 one-family dwelling units in 11 buildings. The buildings are two and three units per building. They're proposing 21 market-rate units and six fair and affordable housing units. Four of the affordable units are proposed in this building right here, this location that is a two-story building with two units on each level. And the other two multifamily units are being proposed at the bottom of the hill in the existing McCon Stern House, proposing to adaptively reuse that building to put two affordable units in there. The existing driveway location will be reused into the site. That job will be widened to 20 feet to make it a little better access into the property, and we'll flatten it out the bottom a little bit to make it safer where it approaches South Broadway. The units are arranged around a loop road that you can see here. The units facing South Broadway in this location, we've oriented them so that the short side of the buildings are facing South Broadway, so it decreases the perceived mass of the buildings when you're looking at it from that direction. We've incorporated some green spaces into the property. You can see the green space all along South Broadway is continuous with the green space along Station Road. And we do have some infiltration basins in the front of the property along South Broadway. There's also a green space at the top of the road. So as you come in the driveway, we've got a little boulevard entrance to kind of provide a sense of entry. And then there's a green space here that as you enter the development, you look into the development, it softens the view into the property. There's also a continued green space at the bottom of the site that'll be maintained. There's actually some driveway here at this side of the site that'll be removed. There's an existing deck patio area right here that'll be removed, and that'll actually decrease the impervious surface there at the 40 South Broadway portion of the property. In terms of parking, the plan meets the requirement for the attached one-family dwelling units of two spaces per dwelling unit. There's 54 spaces required, and we're proposing 96 spaces. That'd be 44 spaces in garages and 52 spaces in the open in driveways. In terms of the bulk requirements, as David said, we prepared a site capacity plan which yielded 31 units. The plan proposes 27 units. The plan also complies with the minimum setbacks that are required by zoning. There is a 125-foot buffer required along South Broadway, as well as a buffer of 50 feet required along the old Crote Aqueduct. Those are honored. There are no structures within those buffers. However, we do maintain the existing driveway, which will be widened within the buffer. And there is a one-way access driveway here that's 15 feet wide. That is within the buffer, as well as the two infiltration basins that are shown on the plan. But there are no structures proposed within the buffers. And as a matter of fact, there are existing structures and buildings within the buffers, all of which will be removed. So there's a building that butts right up to the back of the property line here, a house that'll be taken out, and the larger fee building comes out into the buffer here, and that building will be removed in its entirety. In terms of coverage, the plan complies with the maximum permitted coverage, which is 18 percent. That's exclusive of the McCon Stern building. As David had mentioned, we respectfully request a referral to the Architectural Review Board to seek a determination that this building has historical significance, and it could then be, that would then be applied, an additional 2 percent permitted coverage to the site for a total of 20 percent. This plan has shown has coverage of 18.57 percent. In terms of stormwater, I started to mention, we did prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan in accordance with the requirements of the New York State D E C and the Village of Irvington. The plan proposes two infiltration basins, dislocation here in the front of the property, an infiltration basin at the rear of the property, and a bio-retention area incorporated into the green space. And all of these basins are incorporated into the contiguous green space at the perimeter of the property, as well as the one in the interior green space. And those practices will ensure that there is no increase in the rate or volume of runoff leaving the site after construction. We did speak with the folks that live in this residence here. They were concerned about the proximity of the development to their house. We assured them that, you know, with the implementation of this stormwater management plan, there would be actually less runoff running from the property towards their property. With that, if it pleases the board, we'd like to run through a little video simulation. It's about five minutes. It'll give you a good idea of what the project would look like if constructed. The base information for the video is based on G I S information and actual survey data, so the base information, the topography is very accurate. And the one thing it does not show, which we apologize, the stormwater practices were designed after the simulation, so you won't see the stormwater practices in the video, but it'll give you a good idea of the layout and the massing of the project.
I think it's going to be projected on that. We'll see if we have to take that. Take the tripod out of there. Quadri pod out of there.
Do you want to turn off the lights or something?
Yeah, if we can dim them, please. Is that too dark?
No.
It's okay. So we're going to start off on Broadway going northbound, and you're going to see Harriman Road on your right, Station Road on your left, and we'll come upon the McCon Stern Building on your left, just to orient you. All right, here we go. We're coming north on South Broadway. You see the McCon Stern House on the left, Harriman Road to your right, and we're approaching the site is on the left, behind the stone wall. So as you look up through the trees, this is, we've placed the trees where they actually were on the survey, and you can see just glimpses of some of the residences as you look up the slope through the trees. It's about a 30 to 40-foot grade change from the South Broadway elevation to the elevation of the houses on the site.
Well, you're showing us what this will look like with the units built.
Correct.
Well, then are you also showing us what this will look like with the trees removed that you proposed to remove?
We have not, with the trees removed. This was done, I said, just, there's only a couple of trees coming out with a stormwater management basin, and we can adjust that. Now we're going south on South Broadway. The Irvington Estates is here on the right, and we're coming up to our driveway on the right. And we're going to enter into the site. This is the existing location of the site driveway. As we said, it'll be improved, just to be a little bit wider, to provide better access to the site. And we're coming up the driveway. That's the three trees there in the boulevard entrance that I had mentioned that kind of provides a sense of arrival at the project. And you see the green area in the background that we've maintained. There will be a bio-retention feature in there. And now we're heading up the southerly driveway facing towards the aqueduct. This gives you a sense of the architecture that'll be used. The architect did provide models of these buildings.
Now that's a one-way road coming out?
That's one-way coming towards us, correct, at the end of the loop.
Wrong way.
This is two-way.
Was it? The car was going the right way.
Sorry about that. So now, as I said, we're heading towards the aqueduct.
And the entrances are around the sides on some of these units, on the two units that are attached?
Right. Units come in the side. And the aqueduct is straight away, and we're looking right now towards Irvington Estates, behind that little driveway. And the site will be, you know, the architecture is going to be quite detailed and, you know, be extensively landscaped. Now we're heading south towards Station Road. The green area between the buildings there.
Like, how many years into the development is this video proposed?
The trees.
And, yeah, and all the landscaping and everything.
Yeah, I'd say those trees, they're not that much larger than would be planted, maybe a few years, four or five years.
How wide is that road?
20 feet is proposed. We're trying to limit the impervious surfaces, so we proposed 20 feet. That's one of the three...
This is facing south. These are the buildings facing south.
Correct. That's one of the three unit buildings on the right, and now you're just turning now to face back towards South Broadway, east. And we come back around, let's see if the car is still facing the wrong way. We're just trying to give you some glimpses in between.
Are these the proposed masses that you're proposing?
The buildings, yes.
So the roof lines are accurate?
Yeah, the architect is still refining the plans, but this is the general idea of the architecture. That building on the left is the fair and affordable housing unit. That's four units in there, two up and two down.
Did you back up on that?
You're panned to that right now. You'll see that building there. And the materials are exactly the same for this building as the rest of the building, and the architecture is in a similar style.
And then how many entrances into that building?
There'd be, you'd go in the right, and you'd go up and down for the two right units, and left for the door, up and down. And only the ground floor units there have garage.
Oh. So what's, I think there's what, garages, and then what, three spaces or six spaces proposed in front of that building?
Yeah, they have four spaces for the four units, one in the garage, three in...
Outside.
Outside, so there's two per unit. Correct. Now the car is going the right way, isn't it? I don't know what happened there. So this is 15 foot wide, one-way. We had narrowed this in response to a comment from the Village Board.
It's wide vehicle.
Yeah, it is. There's the green space on the left.
Oh, the purpose of 15 foot is the Village Trust.
Just trying to limit impervious surface, and thought a one-way was adequate. You know, it is okay to be one-way out of there. That works absolutely fine. And then we're exiting the driveway here back past that little planted median. And now we're going to flip over to the aqueduct and do a short walk down the aqueduct. Coming back out to South Broadway. So now we're walking southbound along the aqueduct. The development is on the left. You see the existing brick wall that fronts the development.
And that's essentially the back of the building.
That's the back of the buildings, exactly. Those are beautiful views of the Hudson River.
Now, would the back of those buildings be the same back that faces south?
That faces south. Yeah, it's consistent, all the architecture in all directions.
But I think, but you only have one three-unit building facing towards the aqueduct. I think you only have three three-unit buildings on the site, and they're two facing toward, well, they're two backing up to Station, yeah, towards Station Road, and one facing towards the west, towards the aqueduct. You didn't do any simulation from Station Road?
We didn't.
Pat, there's three units facing the aqueduct.
Yes, there's one building that has three units facing the aqueduct, but that's the only other three-unit building. The other two three-unit buildings are facing, are backing up the station.
We were walking down the aqueduct here. Walking left, yeah, three unit, a three unit. All the rest are duplexes.
But I just want to be sure, because it's concerning, the backs of the, what we saw are facing the aqueduct, the architecture or the look of that back of those, is the same look that these would have?
That's correct.
Same finished look on all of it.
It's not so much the finish in interest, it's the variation. It's not a wall.
Correct, yes.
It's not the wall of China.
Correct. And we can depict that more clearly for you if we need to.
Yeah, the only difference is that these would be, these units here, since the site slopes from here to here, we made up some grade change across them, and they were walkout basements.
So you would be seeing three and a half stories?
Three stories on this side and two stories on this side.
So then you're recreating some of that over there.
And actually, we actually hit right on existing grade by doing that. The slope comes along the side of the building, and actually you're hitting the contour, the existing contour. There is a bit of a flat area existing behind the buildings before you get to the slope, so we actually designed to see you hit that, and we don't have to grade behind it, you know, six inches, but very little.
How far south do the existing structures go? Do you have an idea? No, what's there now? How far south is the buildings that are there?
All the existing, there's an existing building right here. Yeah, existing additions.
I think even if you could just point out where the main structure is to in relation, because that's still visible from Station Two.
This is an existing house here. Our building probably goes to right about here, just clips this stone wall here, the our building. There's an existing building here. I was saying, this building?
I have more interest in how the existing buildings look when you're looking north from Station Road.
When you're looking up the hill.
I think the reality of this, you see, it's very interesting. You don't see that building that's closest to Station Road because it's only one story, it's very low. What you do see is the main mansion, which is set back considerably farther from it, because that's two and a half, three stories. Yes. Is that, that actually you actually see? Yeah, well, I am, right, that's why I was asking, you didn't do any visualization from Station Road, and I think that's certainly important, I think, to me and maybe to other boards.
Okay. Understood. We could do some, we could do maybe some snapshots, some photos, and then, or you guys see the model?
Winter time conditions.
Yes, and trees, leaves off the trees, you know. And also, if you can do it, I mean, showing what trees you're going to take down.
Right. Yeah, we identified them on the plan, we put access there, we can go through and kind of enumerate for you what trees would be taken down to do that. This is what I was pointing out, the existing buildings here and here in the buffer, and the buildings here in the buffer, that would be taken down. All the buildings on the site, except for the McCon Stern House, would be demolished.
I guess we're going to bounce around, because there's a lot going on here and a lot to talk about. You just mentioned that one building that's right next to the aqueduct. That building, is that building separate from the wall that's there, Joe? So taking down that building is not going to be an issue for any damage to that wall that's there?
It's actually sitting on top.
Right against it, right?
It's right up...
On the wall.
It's on the wall.
It's on the wall.
It's on top of the wall?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're just...
You go inside the building, the actual wall.
Is part of the building? It's part of the...
So what they do is they just set the building right on top of the wall.
Okay. So, but you can remove, you can remove that building and...
Absolutely.
Well, damage, you do damage.
We'll remove it by hand.
You're repaired.
Yeah. Not look at damage, that wall at all.
Okay. That wall extends from right here all the way down to here. And then there's a stone wall with a fence on top of this portion. But you're right, the wall, but adjacent to the building.
I'll open up to the board if, unless you have more that you want to say at this point.
No, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
My main concern, we already talked about, the view from Station Road, what will it look like, the back of those buildings? Every time I come south on Broadway and I look at the back of 140, I cringe, if you know what I mean. Have you seen the back of 140 Broadway when you're coming south?
Right.
I don't want to see a wall of China up there.
Okay. Yeah, no, you know, it's, this is about 50 feet lower than this. It's up, and there's a substantial wood in the buffer here. In the winter, you will see more, and in the summer, you really don't see much of anything looking up there.
The back is kind of varied in...
This, yeah.
The way it looks from the rear, according to what you've...
It would look like that, right. And the setback is 30 feet that's required, and we're between 45 and 60 feet.
It's 30 feet high, and so it would be interesting to see the visualization from looking north from the south.
So just so the board's clear, we hear that, we hear that comment uniformly, we will generate a visual with architectural rendering from Station Road. Just so you understand, I mean, winter scene. I think how I perceive it as a planner and how... Winter scene, I think how I perceive it as a planner, and having lived in the village for 40 years, as you approach the village from, coming north on South Broadway, right, this, this particular site and the McCon site are really gateways to the downtown of the village. And if you look around that particular intersection of Station Road and Harriman Road and Broadway, you'll see that all those buildings, even though they're multifamily, they're all set back quite a distance from Broadway. Richmond Hill is, the apartments, I don't know the name of the apartments, Cedar Ridge Apartments, all set back. And then, you have just a single-family home, the McCon House, and then you also have the park. We have Memorial Park, which is right there. So I think it's very important that that open space feel be maintained as one approaches the village from the south going north towards Main Street.
And obviously, Mr. Chairman, you realize there is 125-foot Broadway buffer, which we understand we have to respect, and we will take you through the vegetation that's in there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We will take you through the vegetation that's in there, because we spent a lot of time as a team going over it. There's a lot of good, healthy trees that we are not touching on that north-south corridor along Broadway.
Well, I think, right, you have the Broadway buffer, but then you also have to understand, when you're coming from the south, you see--
The angle.
--the entire rear of the FEI property. And you can see the, you can see the mansion as it sits now at this particular time of year. And that was one of the concerns that the board had and that I had when Continuum was here, that they were creating a wall of development along that south facade and around the corner along the, what would be the east facade. And that's something I don't want to see happen, and I don't think the other board members are particularly interested in seeing that happen, too.
Well, Continuum was much taller than coming south to north, and it was very visible, irregardless of the landscaping that they were going to put in. And I think that I would like to see real pictures. Computers really do a good job. I would like to see real pictures of what you will be looking at coming south-north, and also, coming north-south, the infiltration units right there, yeah, what would have to be removed for those infiltration units.
Yeah, those trees. There's only a couple trees. We're going to take a close look. We put X's and the trees on the plan, but there's only, in this area, most, all the vegetation's down here, there's only a couple of scattered trees in here. There wasn't a whole lot in there. We took a look at that. These basins, these infiltration basins are planted with a seed mix, and they become more meadowy type of lawn. They're only a three- or four-foot depression that goes down. They're not the old-fashioned big holes in the ground with lawn.
No, I understand that, but I just want to see what is going to be there later on, irregardless, I mean, of the lawn. You still need some trees there to, as a buffer.
Sure. And for the, for the, a couple of several trees we're going to take down, we're going to put that, put in more than we're going to take out. So we'll take a look at that.
Okay, but I think, while we're talking about the buffers, I think, I don't know if you realize this, but in the Broadway buffer, that, that type of development really is not permitted without a variance. Okay, the, even the detention basins, not the driveway is permitted, but the detention basins are not. And again, you know, you have to go back 30, 40 years in this village, when there was a development that occurred at the top of Broadway, I'm sorry, at the top of Main Street, Field Point, actually, is what it was, that, that really precipitated a reaction from a number of people in the village about the type of development that could occur in the village, particularly along Broadway, and maintaining that open space feel along Broadway. And coming out of that development, I was on that ad hoc committee, we developed the whole resource protection and the original buffer, which was only 50 feet, but now is 125 feet along Broadway. So those, those developments of those detention basins are not really permitted in the Broadway setback. And I know you're minimizing, Anthony, but it's more than just a couple of trees that are coming out. There's, there's a, there's a cops of trees right at that north detention basin that you're proposing, that there are probably, I don't know if, I'll pull out the terms again, but at least 10, 10 to 12 trees right in that, in the detention basin that are coming out to create that detention basin. And I would hope that, you know, with your architect and your engineer, that you could do something a little bit more creative and try and relocate those detention areas out of the Broadway buffer, if it requires under the road or some other location. But I don't, I personally don't want to see the Broadway buffer intruded upon. All right? And it's not, it's not permitted at this point, actually, without a variance.
Yeah, I do hear that, but these, you know, when they go in and they fill in after it's construction, they're going to be part of that green buffer, is the concept. We can certainly quantify the number of trees that were reflecting there for you, and take a look at that. And I hear what you're saying, and we'll look at it, maybe we can make this fire retention area bigger and shrink these, but what we're trying to do is the DEC now, these days, likes to see more green practices, rather than the hole-in-the-ground detention basin, where you pipe it from all the buildings and the roads into this big hole in the ground and treat it that way. So we tried to do some more, smaller practices, which is what they like to see with infiltration. And we had met with Hansoff as early in the project, and they gave us, they save their preference for not having subsurface drainage. We tried to do it all exposed, rather than starting to put, you know, drainage beneath the roads and, and chambers and things like that. We'll hear what you're saying, and we'll take a look at it.
I think you've got to take a look at that, because that, I just--
Got it.
That really is something that, that's an issue. I think also, that the driveway, as it comes down onto Broadway, I think obviously you're bringing it in as a, as a 90-degree angle now, so you have a T-intersection there, but you're also, I think that the traffic study showed the removal of, or the suggestion of removing five or six parking spaces along Broadway. I think that may be an issue. I mean, you have commercial establishments just up the road from here, and those folks on a regular basis have cars parked, those, I mean, the, the customers to those establishments are parked along that, that area. And so, I think to remove those spaces, I understand we, we need to make sure that it's safe for people to be able to come out of that driveway, but I think we, you've got to take a look at that and see if there's some other way to mitigate that issue. Not only that, but I think the other thing is, what is, what is really, the traffic study didn't seem to really go into, what are the impacts of trying to make left turns onto Broadway during rush hour, peak hours?
So, I'm glad you asked both of those questions. We anticipated both of those questions, and we didn't bring Rich Pearson, our traffic engineer from JMC tonight. We definitely want to do that at a future meeting. We wanted to see the reaction of the board of the village about looking at those parking spaces on Broadway. We absolutely recognize it would potentially impact the retailers there, so it's something that has to be balanced. It's an existing condition. Right now, FEI has coexisted for however many decades with that existing condition coming out of their site. We're going to come back to you with some specific information about maximum occupancy of the FEI building, and how many cars could be there, and if it were reoccupied at a peak hour, how many vehicles would be competing with traffic in that existing condition? And maybe you'll, maybe we'll decide, there's nothing we should do to those parking spaces, maybe there's something less than the removal of all six. So we're absolutely not prepared to go into detail, because we didn't bring our engineer tonight. We are totally mindful of the fact that it's a balancing concern. The good news is, we are trying to now assemble as much accident data as we can to determine, again, it's, the good news is, this is an existing condition, we're trying to improve it. Anthony said earlier, one of the things that Joe made very clear to us was to try to take that entryway and make it as functional and as safe as possible, and improve what's there. So we are looking at site distance, we are looking at improving some of the walls, and we think we can definitely improve the existing condition.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question to you, too, is to get some accident data between--
Clearly.
--the Maples, I'm sorry, the Maples, the Station Road intersection and--
And Main Street.
And Main Street. I see what's going on. Because I know from experience, I mean, I come out of Station Road every day, not, not usually at prime rush hour, but the times I have, traffic backs up all the way down South Broadway at that location, through that driveway and even beyond. So it's going to be critical, how are people going to be able to make left turns out during peak hour?
Without question. So you, you raised the issue of lefts out, it's also an issue of lefts in, and we're, so we're going to talk to you about the geometry of the movements, and we're going to, that's a future meeting, and we're focused specifically on traffic. We will bring him, we'll do a more detailed presentation, and we wanted to kind of fix these issues out and see if there's anything else of a traffic nature, but we know we've got to come back on that.
Also, on that section, just about where the driveway is, is where Broadway merges, it becomes one lane. So you've got extra traffic, and I agree with Pat, sometimes during the day, the traffic is backed all the way up past Harriman Road.
Understood. Yeah, it goes from one lane here to two lanes here, once you pass the parking spaces.
And then, coming north, the other way. Or, merges to the way.
Well, about, you know, I know you have, you provided two garage spaces in the market rate units, and then there are two parking spaces in front of those units. How are you going to handle parking for visitors to the site?
Right. Well, we have, in essence, four spaces per, per unit, so very rarely would you have more than, you know, the two cars, that probably people have to live there, and then two guests, so that was the thought. We were trying to keep the impervious surfaces down and not create a whole lot of guest parking. That counts towards coverage, so we tried to balance that with getting as many as we could in the driveways in front of the garages, adding the garages, and, and leaving it at that, so.
I'll let, I'll let Ed and Doug discuss a little bit further, too, but my concern is, I mean, it's perfectly timed and coming up to Super Bowl. I mean, what happens if somebody were to have a party up here, and they're inviting 20, 30 people to their unit?
Well--
The gate closes. See, you know, where would you be able to park here?
Most people come for the first half, some come for the second.
Second half, well, that's good.
We're all proposing mountable curb on all the driveways.
It's a runaway game, and everybody leaves at halftime.
We're proposing Belgian block mountable curb on a 45-degree angle, so, you know, on a pinch, if there was a bunch where they could park along the edge of the lawn, we could look at doing some type of a grasscrete in a few spots, but we didn't want to create a sea of pavement and just make a whole bunch of parking spaces that were really hardly ever going to be used, if ever. Because, like we said, we do have four spaces per townhouse unit, a lot of parking.
Your road is too narrow, though, in order to do that.
No, what I was saying is, we have the mountable curb, so they could pull off and park on the edge of the grass there.
What about fire truck access around the complex?
We looked at a, a normal fire truck, and it had no problem, that's where we put this rumble strip.
I don't care about it, I want to--
But then, right, I talked to Ed the other day, and he said we should look at a larger fire truck, and I think, so, I will do that.
Okay.
Got it. What was presented to the Board of Trustees?
As far as the plan?
Yeah.
Very similar plan to this at the end. We went through a progression of starting out, we started out, we got 27% coverage, went to 22, and ended up at this--
Has it evolved since you've, since you've met with the Board of Trustees?
Very little. We've adjusted the alignment of this intersection, we tweaked the units and spread them out a little bit more, got some more separation between some of the units. It's generally, we've added the stormwater, and just kind of got into a little more detailed design, but the, you know, the--
You mean, count distributions, all being the same?
Very similar.
And were the comments that have been made so far from this board, were any of those kind of comments brought up with the Board of Trustees?
Anthony, I'll, I would say, some of the comments certainly were raised--
Specifically, like--
But, but remember, let's take a step back, remember, the primary issue that we were focusing on with the Board of Trustees, and I said primary, not the sole and exclusive, was the zoning text. We went to them, because we could only, we, going back to my opening comments, we could only, I, I think you heard most of this, we could only really do what the DeNardos were seeking, what DeNardo Development wanted to do, if we adjusted the zoning text. So I want to take a step back to make sure you do here, Mr. Boyle, is, the concept was, we knew site capacity yielded 31 units. The DeNardos wanted to do a high-quality, multifamily residential project. They did not want to build a monolithic building in the center of the site. So that meant we needed to spread the buildings out. Once you do that, you exceed the 10% coverage that was then allowed in the MF zone. We took an analysis of other projects throughout the village, forget the area--
Yeah, I actually know all this stuff. I'm just much more curious if, because they use this as an incubator, as I understand. They, this was, this was a document that they used to refer to, to figure out how to do the zoning amendments.
Sure. We use this as a conceptual--
So the question was, did they understand the implications that have just been brought up already?
Well--
When they, when they were making their evaluation?
I don't want to speak for your Board of Trustees, that would be inappropriate, I don't want to speak for your professional staff. I would, so, I'm sure you will--
I'm just asking if, I'm not trying to get in any trouble, I'm just trying to find out if this was brought up and they were comfortable with it.
George, go ahead on this. No, they never, they never looked at drainage, was never an issue, it wasn't even on the plan, they didn't look at drainage. Parking, they did look at, because the original proposal was that there be one and a half parking spaces per unit as their, which is a requirement for multifamily, and they decided to make it two, because these were more like single-family dwellings. So they did look at the parking, and that's why they required more parking than, than was otherwise required in the MF district. Because I, and then, the visuals, well, only in the sense that they wanted the, you know, the buffers kept, and they did, they didn't vary the buffers. And on the fire truck access, I'm sorry, George, I'm just going through all the issues that were raised. And on the fire truck access, no, they didn't get into that, because they assumed that's something the planning board would get into.
And just following--
They don't have the expertise.
Something like, for instance, the infiltration basins, the idea, which is a new process which makes sense, that's a coverage issue in terms of, like, it isn't allowed, as I understand, in the buffer.
Yeah, that was never on the, that wasn't on the plan. Tonight's the first time the infiltration, it isn't, it's coverage. The issue with--
No, no, but I understand what I'm trying to say is--
The issue is with activity within the buffer. And there never was understanding that there would be activity with, within the buffer. That never came up, because then, I said, they never looked at drainage.
Absolutely true.
Right, no, what I'm trying to figure out here is--
No, no, I want, no, please--
I'm just asking a question, like, we're the second--
Welcome.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to find out what specifically was reviewed by the Board Trustees, and figure out why and how they made their decisions the way they did, because they're done, all right? That's, that's what it is. So I'm just trying to understand the thinking through it, and see how that implicates what we're doing. Because as I see it very simply, is that they have, they have looked at this, and they agree to this, this principle of the text, the zoning, and understanding that something in this, that's why I was asking, is this very similar to what was it? That's what's going to be, in essence, built. And this board made recommendations to that board, we went there, and we kind of told them about some of the concerns, and I'm just trying to figure out, okay, where did it lay? Where did it end up? And then, to take it from there, then we go forward--
Got it.
Because we're not, that's in the past, that's already been done.
So I want to, I do want to address that one step further, because I appreciate the So, I do want to address that one step further, because I appreciate the question and I think it's a really important one. I'll give you, you asked the question, what did the Board of Trustees do? And I think it's a topic that we'll try to answer that. I want you to understand my client's perspective. My client's perspective, the development team's perspective, is we spent a year, or more or less, going through a zoning text analysis, but not doing it with blinders on. We did it under the auspices of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. We did it with a conceptual plan, because nobody, we couldn't ask the Board of Trustees to analyze changing coverage. We couldn't ask the Board of Trustees to analyze changing building, building separation, without looking at what those impacts would be. So, from a generic standpoint, from a general environmental standpoint, there's no question, we went through that. They adopted a negative declaration before they adopted the text amendment, and I don't believe, Mr. Boyle, they did it in any way with blinders. They, it was made clear to us at the beginning, it was made clear to us at the end, that we were going to come before this board and we were going to embark on a detailed site plan review. We know that, we understand that as a team. We're here with a plan that I don't think anyone would say is fully baked out. However, the flip side from Mr. DeNardo's standpoint is, we certainly have a pretty good understanding of how the site lays out and why we laid it out the way we did. And we respected comments we got from your trustees about creating green spaces in a, they redesigned portions of it from a conceptual standpoint.
Right, and I was just reacting to some of the, I thought, excellent comments that you got already from here.
Absolutely.
And I went, huh, I wonder if those kinds of comments were already discussed, vetted, and decided, eh, it's all right, you know, this is okay, so that we don't go then reinventing the wheel. That was the very simple question that I was asking.
All this stuff, everything raised tonight, everything raised tonight was new and not covered by them, because it was understood that it would require site plan review. The one thing I would say that they mainly focused on was coverage, because that was the big number they were changing, was coverage. But always recognizing that you would only get that much coverage if you say I need all the other requirements. You can't have more coverage if your roads need to be wider or whatever.
Yeah, and this is not primary, it's still milk, but it was just one of those that the, these things that are now in the buffer.
They were not in the conceptual plan.
Right, and if they weren't, okay, but they were thought of as a good practice thing, and they couldn't be in that buffer, they'd have to be somewhere else. And then, that would cause an issue with coverage and bulk and things like that. So, I'm trying to just understand, do they say, you know what, that's okay, they can stay in here, or we think that's okay, or not? But it doesn't sound like that happened.
And I just want to go back, because you may have thought I interrupted. Mary Ann made a comment, and I said, absolutely true. I wanted you to understand, the applicant agrees, we did not discuss stormwater management and drainage in the buffer. That's the only reason I echoed what she was saying. We hadn't developed the engineering plans to that extent. We were there for conceptual site plan review and a text amendment. And whether or not there's an invalid intrusion into the buffer, we want to come back to you. I want to take a look at the Broadway, I'm very familiar with the Broadway buffer, but I don't have the language in front of me. I don't know whether these constitute structures, or whether this is just tree removal in the buffer, and I want to look at that. So, we want to come back.
And this is just, I'm asking questions, I'm not any more than that.
Got it. I appreciate it. Thank you for that part of the question.
It's pretty well spelled out that this is considered an intrusion into the Broadway buffer, and you also have an intrusion into the aqueduct buffer too, in terms of the detention basin there too.
Got it.
Right, and if they're good practices, then it makes sense.
Maybe worth looking at, absolutely. We're not backing off it yet, we want to look at it, we want to understand what the issues are.
A couple other things is specifically about the way you kind of presented plans now to this board. I think it's very important to show, especially on a site planet here, not just green swatches of areas, but actual trees and what they are, all right? Because we all sort of know a lot about what's there. And when we went through it before with another applicant, even the photo montages, there were, you know, some of those had to be adjusted to be a little bit more accurate with the amount of trees that are in there. And it is kind of important, as it's been discussed endlessly, about the importance of the uphill from the south, the first impression of this. And it's a very important viewpoint for the village. And what we tried to tell the other applicant, and we discussed with the Board of Trustees and with this applicant, that in essence, some of this has to be designed from the outside in, all right? Now, again, this was sort of, it's a plan that works from the inside out. Now, we just want you to look at from the outside in. And specifically from this board, we were concerned about the setbacks. It's too abstract for this specific site. And there are certain qualities to this site that I think should be emphasized, and we just hope that you kind of look at that.
We will look at that, and I know, and I'll let Anthony speak to the tree analysis, and the accuracy of your video also, I think, worth just mentioning.
Well, before you go on, excuse interrupting, but I just want to make a comment here, that both the Environmental Conservation Board and our landscape architect, both got back to us with comments, and you'll be getting them too. And one of their main comments was that you need to identify, you need to do a tree survey, identify every tree by its species, by its size, by its condition, and then identify which trees are coming out of those trees.
We previously talked about that.
Yeah, we will get to work on that.
And that's standard, everyone...
We understand.
It's fine. We do have a tree survey for the property, it is shown on the black and white plans that we gave you with the existing additions, and we put Xs on the trees to remove in the demo plan, but if it was helpful on this rendering, we could show the individual trees in a different symbol, like an existing symbol, rather than having this mask, and actually locate them on here. The survey uses a very small symbol, so we could make them a little truer to size, and add them to this if you think it would be helpful.
So, are you saying you've already done the specific tree analysis, or...
Well, we didn't quantify it by making a chart saying X, the number of trees of such size. We just took the symbol, there's a tree chart on the existing, on the survey, and then we put Xs, that are the ones that are coming out.
So, we've already, and I don't want to add a disconnect, because I want to respond to Mr. Boyle's concern, are you looking for the colored version of that?
No, you'll see, what we typically get is something, I don't see it in here, where there are, here's the diameter of the tree, here's it's being destroyed, here's what's being cut down, what isn't. And specifically on this site, there were a couple of what's called heritage trees that the first applicant killed, you know, chopped, and then they came back and preserved those. I don't know what's happening with those.
Yeah, we'll think that in the next step.
Do you know which trees those were, which ones they were?
I think, I think there was, like, was it a seven?
Do you know which trees those were, those heritage trees?
I think it was, yeah, it was one in the front.
Couple of big beech trees on the right.
You'll see, you'll see when you get the comments from the ECB and from our landscape architect.
There's some right in the middle.
If you want, the second iteration, I think, or whatever, of continuum, they actually preserved that. There was at least one or two that were that way. So, but I think it's much more about figuring out what you have there and understand that if there is a tree that is of significance, and we've been through this before with other properties where it sounds like it is and it really isn't, but let's at least address the larger, more significant trees, and then assess, do these things, are these things worthwhile or not? But, as I see it, you have presented this to the Board of Trustees, and did they understand the clearing of this land for this?
Again, I hesitate to, they're intelligent, they know what we're talking about, I think they understood that.
I think there's a big difference between a conceptual plan and then a formal site plan.
Maybe one of the things that we ought to do, and I don't know how frequently you do it, we would like to consider doing a sidewalk with you at the appropriate time. That might help understand the layout, it might allow Anthony to bring to life the layout of the buildings, and we can see what trees could or could not be saved and why.
When you do that, a couple of things. First of all, you're going to need to do a survey of the trees out there, and they should be flagged, and as to which trees are going, which trees are staying. And then also, when we take that sidewalk, it would be, that would be a good idea. You need to identify the corner of those buildings, particularly the ones that are facing Station Road and the ones facing the aqueduct, even the ones facing the co-ops too, so that people get an idea of where these buildings are going to be in relation to what's there now.
Certainly can do that.
The good and bad is that a lot of people here have some experience with this site, so they've been there a couple of times.
It is what it is. It's probably overall, it's good, because you understand it, and hopefully we can confront the issues. We know we have to confront the issues, so, let's do it.
But from my personal point of view, I mean, I would like to see this site developed. I think it's time for it to be developed. I think the fact that you're providing some affordable housing, I think that's really good for this village and for the county as a whole. And I want to give you a compliment for the way you're going about it with the McCon House, that you're just going to leave the McCon House the way it is and make it into a two-family house, and leave that entire site the way it is. Because even though that is own multifamily, it really has no relationship to the FEI property. And it really, it should remain as a single or even a two-family house, that's fine.
But we are hoping, Mr. Chairman, that the Architectural Review Board agrees with us in terms of how we're making use of it.
Right, there's a big difference, we tend, I think it was mentioned before, about, you know, adapting that building to a two-family is quite different than what you see right now. And I don't know what you've done, or whatever, but is that what you were planning to show to the Architectural Review Board?
Brandings of the building?
Two good questions there. In terms of the Architectural Review Board, ultimately, we'll get into the architecture of what we're planning on doing to the McCon Stern House. Threshold issue that we need to go to them sooner is whether the building, as it stands today, passes the test of the language in the text amendment, such that from a coverage standpoint, it gets backed out. So, we're hoping to go to the, when we've discussed this with staff, I think they're aware, we want to go to the Architectural Review Board as soon as possible, with whatever information we can get on the McCon Stern House, look at it, and determine whether it satisfies the criteria of the recent text amendment, such that JMC's calculations of coverage are accurate. Once we get over that threshold, then it's time to start looking at what is Joe planning on doing with that building, and what's the architecture of that modification. He believes the building can be adaptively reused and repurposed into a two-family dwelling without a tremendous amount of difficulty. Certainly, work has to be done, but the building does lend itself to adaptive reuse.
George, the language in the code is, you know, besides getting the bonus, any changes to it have to, the ARB has to determine that it still maintains its historical significance if those changes...
Thankfully, I'm not on the Architectural Review Board, because if I was, I wouldn't want to let them know, before I said this deemed worth, you're actually preserving this thing, is to figure out what you're actually doing to it, because that's what typically, you know, to figure out if it's appropriate or not, that's what's typically done, but...
This is a little bit, this is an, this whole provision is an atypical provision.
Beyond my pay grade, so I was saying...
And it's critical, because you're currently at 18.5% coverage?
Correct.
And if this wasn't a significant building, it would be, you would have to eliminate five...
Right. So, we would have to, the plan that we've spent a lot of time and energy coming up with, conceptually, but admittedly, we've spent a lot of time and energy as a team, it works, and the code was drafted openly and knowingly, that it works if that building is ultimately deemed to be of historical character. So, we need to make sure that that's...
And after the threshold is decided, as it is a significant building, you still have to go back to have them review whatever you're going to do to that building.
But we would never, unless you all told us to put the ARB as the horse in front of the cart, we typically, not only in this village, but elsewhere...
That's what I'm afraid of.
We don't do the ARB until we're further along with a project. So, that's why, responding to Mr. Boyle's question, I don't think we've fully baked out the architectural modifications of the McCon Stern House until we get further into this process. If I'm wrong about that, let me know. I'm lost, okay?
Maybe we should make a note that the going, if the outcome of this is that they do go for a threshold, that somehow we communicate with the ARB that it is truly a threshold question and that it's expected it's coming back. So, they're not looking at it for anything further than the threshold issue of coverage.
I can assure you, we're not going to, we're not going to tell them anything other than that. And I think your staff has, is very well aware of what we need to do in terms of just advancing. We've had this discussion before tonight. We'd like to go to the ARB.
It's a step-by-step process. Step one, you're going to the ARB, get, see what they have to say.
Correct.
Step two, with your drawing.
Come back. You got it.
So, that's all could change if, from 18.5 to 18.
We think it's unlikely, but I'm not going to tell you, your question was, this all could, the answer is yes, it could, we don't think it will.
So, don't make the decision for them.
What's that?
Don't make the decision for them.
No, but my position, Mr. Manfred, as you know, is to try to advocate what we believe it to be.
What else is suggested when you come back, is that we do some site sections through this, so we see what existing is and what you're proposing? Because I'm really curious about the basement coming out at a different level.
Okay.
That's a good question. What is the third, the lower level that's facing south going to look like? Is it going to look like a basement wall, or is it going to look like a part of the building?
Finished, right? Yeah. It'll be finished like the rest of the building. I mean, it'll look like a three-story elevation, but are you asking, would that just be an exposed concrete wall in the back?
That's what I'm asking.
No, that would be finished.
What's the length of those buildings?
I think it's...
Is it going to be finished like with windows and the door, or is it just a finished wall?
Windows and doors.
There would be a door out the, out the back.
It's 20 scale.
About 100 feet, that building.
So, each of those buildings is about 100 feet long? Okay, and what's the distance between the...
30 feet. Distance from these two?
Mm-hmm.
About 18, between the chimneys, about 18 feet. It's about 25 feet.
25 feet, and the easternmost building is right up against the buffer, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
And, I'm sorry, and the western building, the western facade is up against, no, the, again, on the Station Road side, that western building, that facade is right up against the side yard setback?
This one, this side of the building is against the setback. The setback here is back here, right here. So, 30 feet's required here, we have 45. 30 feet's required here, we have 30.
Isn't the west side against a wall? Isn't there a wall there too, on the west side?
Yeah, there's a wall, there's a couple walls, there's a wall here, a wall here, and there's a wall here.
Right, that's... There's some pre-existing older tank walls.
And eventually, we'll get a set of drawings that'll show elevation view of what the back and front is going to look like.
Yes.
That's what George was asking for, are you wanting some sections, third section?
That's a, oh, you're talking architectural elevations, additions and sections?
I think this, Manfred's asking for architectural elevation, let's go to the windows and the doors and the bottom. What it's going to look like?
I think you're doing what we would ask anyone else to do, so, that's all. None of these things are at all...
Nobody said otherwise.
Yeah. One other comment I had, well, a couple of the comments, pedestrian, pedestrian movement through the site and to Broadway and to the old Proton Aqueduct. I see that you've created a pathway at the end of that driveway that will take residents to the old Proton Aqueduct. And then you created a pathway, a sidewalk, I should say, on the eastern side of the site, and also, parallel to Broadway. But there is no other sidewalk through the site.
Wasn't there a sidewalk that was proposed at the last board meeting? We didn't, wasn't I...
That was this sidewalk.
No, I thought there was a sidewalk all the way around, a walking sidewalk.
This sidewalk was not there. I honestly don't think it's really necessary, but we were trying to keep some of those coverages down, so we didn't have it there, but they had asked that we add that at the town board, so we did add that in there. It's going to be such low traffic volumes in this development that people will walk in the street, and there really shouldn't be an issue. There's, you know, low traffic volumes even in the peak hours in the morning when people are going to work, and in the evening when they're returning, so people can comfortably walk up and work.
And we've been, this whole project, we've been very cautious about coverage. Remember, we had asked the Board of Trustees for a higher coverage number, and we actually shared with the Board of Trustees, you should all be aware of this, we shared with the Board of Trustees, coverage on multifamily projects throughout the county and throughout the region, because we really did feel that the coverage was out of line with contemporary zoning. We got what we got. The board felt, did what it thought was appropriate, and as a result of that, we were in a tighter box.
And that's why I asked that question about how they think.
I think, again, I think, again, in talking about TOD, I think it calls for maybe some, look at some sidewalks internally, especially if you're creating three-bedroom units, there's a prospect, you'll have families there, you may have children there, and even if they're not children, there's adults there who'd be walking, either into town, to the train, and it might be best to start looking at the possibility of some other sidewalks around the site.
Would you consider a sidewalk that didn't satisfy your criteria for coverage, something that would be a non...
Outside the coverage.
Outside the coverage. In other words, an area, a defined area, Mr. Chairman, I think we did something like this way back when in Legend Hollow, quite frankly, around Manor Pond. Something that would not actually hit the criteria for coverage, but it would still be like pea gravel or something of that nature. Help me with this, Anthony.
Well, I think it's going to be something that is plowable and shovelable.
Shovelable. This path is mulch, if we were trying to keep the coverage down. There's an existing gate here that we're continuing to use there. The thing with a sidewalk in a development like this is it's broken up by all these driveways. So, if you had a sidewalk, it'd be a little piece of sidewalk, a little piece, a little piece, a little piece, and chances are, people wouldn't walk across the driveway, up on the curb, the sidewalk up and down, they would just walk in the road where it's flat, because there really ain't be any cars to speak of.
But the internal island that you've created, there are longer spaces there, right? There are longer spaces there. Where have the people all the way in the southwest corner of the site get down to Broadway if they want to walk? They've got to walk in the drive, they either have to walk in the driveway or the southwest corner. Either going to walk in the driveway around those houses or you're going to cut through behind those houses, between the houses in your island. No, you know, to get to Broad, I'm sorry, yeah, to get to Broadway, not main...
Oh, to get to Broadway. Okay, you're gone.
He's got his folks coming through this way.
What if, what if we introduce some more mulch paths through, similar to this one? So they'll look through the landscaping and they could come through. The problem with the mulch paths is you start raising some issues of accessibility.
I understand that, and that's why I think you've got to look at some alternatives as to what really makes sense here and what your clientele is going to be here. Again, it looked like most of these were all, or most of these are three-bedroom units, Joe?
Half-twos.
Yes.
Half-twos and half-threes.
You've got to expect you're going to have probably some children here.
Yeah, the market here, when you look at the studies, is typically more empty nester. These larger townhouses, people are downsizing from their larger, you know, larger houses coming into these townhouses, but probably will be...
But in essence, these are really attached single-family homes. These are not townhouses. I mean, the size of them and the configuration, they're not traditional townhouses.
There certainly can be some...
So I think you've got to take a look at that and see what you can do.
Got it.
Okay. We'll do.
Also, there is a concrete stairway from the McCon House up to the fee property that you said that you're saving and you go, I don't know if you're going to improve it. I mean, are you going to...
There's a gate here.
Now up in the middle.
No, it's actually...
Keep going up.
Yeah. And then it cuts, then it goes, it goes in a sort of an arc shape up to the fee property.
In this slope, because I've walked in here.
Well, it's on your plan. It's on your set of plans there, and it's showing to be saved.
Oh, there's a couple little steps here. Yeah, there's a few little steps here.
There's a couple steps right here.
No, no, no. It's between those two buildings where it ends up.
We'll take a look at it.
Take a look at it, but what do you intend to do with that? I mean, again, because the McCon House is really separated from the rest of the development, you know, possibly do something to create, to connect the McCon House to that, the upper fee property, so that people maybe who wanted to get up to the aqueduct would have an easier way to get there.
We'll take a look at that. There was no intention of creating that connectivity and where, we know that some of those steps appear on the survey. My understanding is that we've been out there and nobody's really found a clear defined, it's not like there's this walkway.
No, it's very rough. Fifty feet of range from here to here.
I don't know how long it's been there anymore.
Exactly.
It's just like, just like the gate that you're talking about, just up from the McCon driveway. I mean, there are trees that are like six or eight inches in diameter that are growing in that area, but there was a pathway through there that took you up to the fee property.
We'll take a look. I think, I mean...
Just let us know what you can do, because it says on your plan, again, I'm just quoting what you say on your plan, you're saving it and you're supposed to improve it, so what does that mean though?
Oh, you're looking at the demo plan, saying, okay.
It's staying, it's staying. Okay. There are some, you know, there are some inconsistencies on your demo plan.
Let us take a look at that.
Take a look at it.
I was unaware that, I don't think that was supposed to say that. Let us take a look.
You've got some walls that are identified, I forget how it goes, they may be identified to be saved, but then, or you don't, you, what you ought to do on your demo plan is do one thing, show what's going to be demoed, don't show what's going to be saved. The assumption is if you're not demoing it, it's going to be saved. All right, but you call out some things are saved, but then it looks like they're not being saved on the site.
Yeah, where that comes from, a lot of times, once we get towards more construction document, we're telling the contractor, don't touch this. But you're right.
Well, no, it's going to be shown accurately on the plan now.
For this purpose, you're right.
I don't know where, the contract is too late at that point, it's got to be shown now that's what's being saved and what's going to be demoed.
We'll coordinate that, absolutely.
So not to waste anyone's time with it too, is that one of the things I think you should look at too is that, I think there's some people here that sort of want you to look at your site plan as it is right now with modifications. So we don't want you to think, at least I don't want you to think, that what you have right now is just, it's not fully baked, but there might be modifications to it before you get into all the other nitty-gritty details so that then you don't have to go backwards. So that, it's been mentioned specifically several times about what the view of this is from that specific vantage point. So I clearly ask you to look at that, show what you have, understand what it is, and figure out a way to mitigate that based on what's existing. And that's like a, you know, that's the start, and then start worrying about the little path from the...
I'm just, we're just responding to what we're getting.
I know, I'm just, yeah, just trying to be...
Sheila raised a point earlier too about emergency vehicles and access to the site. I mean, Ed or Doug, is there any comment from either of you regarding that? Is this an issue at this point?
It needs a little work. We've given up the criteria system, they go that they need to resolve.
Okay.
Doug, it's done enough for preliminary review. Some of the radiuses are okay, some of the widths aren't okay. Once we get more information, we'll go through that while we're here. If you guys, this is another, if you guys are planning on leaving or proposing to try to leave those retention ponds and those buffers, could you do a plan that shows the demolitions and the repairs or alterations that have to be done that are already in there? Overlay, underlay on top of the proposed so that this board can understand it, probably the zoning board too will have to understand it. So if you get that going a little sooner, it'd be nice to have it.
With the existing structures out of there?
Yes, because there's a lot of repairs that have to go on.
Right.
In the intrusion, that might benefit or not benefit.
You're saying, I want to make sure I understand, we're already doing things in the buffer in order to make the project happen, because we've got to pull stuff out.
Right.
So we're already walking into an intrusion.
It might be a repair that might...
Backing out with the repair, we could potentially create some...
The zoning board actually on the Broadway buffer has to approve it, so there's work going to have to see it, so it might, it just got to go.
Just, if you can, Ed, even if we weren't proposing to do anything else other than pull stuff out, would we need to go to them for permission to remove those things?
They used the word intrusion, you and Mary Ann can work that out.
All right. I think you really have to look seriously at Plingo's detention basins out of the buffer areas. I think it sets a precedent that I personally don't want to see occur in the village with regard to the Broadway buffer or the aqueduct buffer. You know, that's been in effect for, as I said, probably about thirty-five years, mid-1980s when we instituted those buffers and resource protection, and I don't think at this point I would want to see that change in the village. And again, this is an important site, and again, you've got that transition from the downtown area until you start getting into the residential and lower density area, and want to maintain that view, that is, that open space type of view. And again, as I said, you're cutting down a number of trees even with just the driveway, just to get your driveway in. There's a number of trees that are coming down the Broadway buffer, and that's another thing, on your demo plan, you've got to show all the buffers and all the setbacks on the demo plan so we can really see what you're taking out of the Broadway buffer and what you're proposing to, if you're going to continue with that. And as I said, I would prefer that you don't do that. And I don't know, I don't speak for anybody else on the board other than myself, most others have comments about that.
Can I ask a question?
Answer it.
Looking at this existing condition, Tom, would you think you might entertain, looking at this area in the buffer, what if we were to take the basin that's right here now and slid it over here where we're going to be ripping out this building anyway and doing all that work because that's right the driveway?
Yes.
Here, and then there's a building here, here, and there's a whole paved driveway here if we move the basin, the infiltration area here, and that's all area that's already going to be disturbed as we've done all those buildings to rip up the driveways.
And that's what Ed was...
And that's what Ed was getting at.
I think what Pat is trying to say is that the spirit of that law was for whenever someone like yourself comes here and does something, you're not touching it, you're, you are bringing it back to where it was, you're not making it into something else, you are preserving it from what it's the buffer. So I think that's what the...
Yeah, and I think at that point, when you start taking out vegetation and the trees within that Broadway buffer, you're, obviously you're closer to Broadway, and with the other trees that you're taking out on the rest of the site to create the buildings where they are permitted to be, you really create a major hole in there in that view from Broadway and from Station Road and South Broadway as you approach it. And I think that's something you have to be very careful about, that's something that we don't want to see happen. I mean, we want to maintain as much of that open space character and that small town and village feel, all right? So it's important to keep that.
Yeah, you could see it actually in your video when you showed going up the drive, there was a clear open slot, you know, it was daylight and you could see up there. Typically now you don't. I mean, when you drive up, it's because of the bulk of the house, but when you drive by, it's really hard to see that there's a big open grass area out there. On yours, it's very apparent, and it's because of what you're doing to it. So what Pat's trying to say is you want to try to mitigate that as much as you can.
Thank you, George.
Is there any cut and fill going on?
Yes, there will be some earthwork.
Well, my point is that during the demolition, you're not using any demolition for fill.
No.
That's not the intention.
The building will take that and we'll do everything in accordance with all the laws for demolition.
Is everything staying on site? All units are staying on site?
Yes.
It's like you were lowering some areas.
I got to say, I need to do a cut and fill. We've done a grading plan, a first shot of the grading plan, making all the features work, we need to do a cut and fill and see how it balances, and it might be a little give and take in raising and lowering some areas because we want to achieve a balanced site so we don't have to bring soil in or remove soil, so that's the next step.
I think Doug, you asked for some horizontal...
There's probably some more cut than fill right now, but the intention would be to, that was our first shot at the grading plan, we've got to raise up the site a little bit to do our best to balance that. The fee building does have a basement that's got to be filled in, we need to look at those.
What is your take on widening the roadways? Twenty feet is pretty narrow.
The idea is, you know, traffic calming, trying to get a residential, quiet residential field and traffic, calm the traffic. Why do you make the roads faster people drive? We don't anticipate a lot of traffic here, but that was our thought. Reduce impervious and provide natural traffic calming. And we thought, for the amount of traffic you're going to hear, which is very minimal at twenty feet, is really more inadequate for two, six-foot cars to get by.
I understand that.
Is it one-way all the way around?
No, no, no. This is, this is all two-way, and then this is just one-way here. So this is two ways in and out. You could, if a person here leaving could come right out and leave here, a person here leaving could come here, these people have a choice, they're going this way or this way. This is the only piece that's one-way.
You want it one-way?
I think it was also something about coverage because that seemed to come up a couple times.
No, actually, the roads don't count towards coverage. The roads count against your site capacity, but they don't count any coverage.
Good.
And also, you have to maintain on site too.
The sidewalk's definitely...
You have to maintain on site.
It increases your... I mean, thankfully, we did have a decent amount of impervious surface here that really helped with under-existing conditions and help with the storm work calculations.
Anthony, I don't know if you ever meet Chanel ask whether we consider going one-way all the way around?
No, we prefer not to. I mean, it leaves a little bit more flexibility for people to be able to go two ways. This originally was two ways and we changed it to one-way.
Only because the road is really narrow.
Or a fire truck can do it that way.
And it would be more difficult for a fire truck. We did design these curves with a typical fire truck, I got a look at a bigger one that Irvington uses, and so we have an auto turn program that'll run the sized vehicle around.
Yeah, but the auto template, you check the wheelbase, our wheelbase is different,
our height is different.
We talked about that.
That's a template that everyone's using.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
I think it'd be a good idea, this application, to have, AKA, I did work with the board on this for the secret and making his own exchanges, but you may want to call them in for the traffic, and I think it'd be able to help with that particular issue. It would be good to get their input on that.
Sure, and to review whatever the applicant submits.
Well, yeah, not, yes, review what they submit, but also take a look at the road size.
And just to clarify, the intention was that these roads would be private, not public, so, you know, we thought we had some flexibility with the subdivision standards and the widths of the roads and the, as you, you know, I know it's a forty-foot right-of-way that's typically required and we have a thirty-foot right-of-way.
The only thing is that, you know, with limited parking, it just makes it very difficult. If someone's parking on the side of the road, you're mountable curves, you know, fire trucks can't get through, it clogs everything up.
You also have, you're saying building code issues with relief, to gain relief from lows is a high standard.
With respect to...
The width of the roads.
Width of the roads.
Grades okay, things like that.
Okay.
You mentioned these would be private roads?
Yes, that was the original intent.
Is they're private roads? Are you expecting villagers' services on private roads?
Certainly we wouldn't be expecting village, snow plowing, et cetera. I think the only thing that would be going in there would be garbage.
And yeah, how would you handle waste disposal?
We're just going to have garbage pails in the garages that they pull out on garbage day, perps on.
No intention for any dumpsters or anything like that.
And watering sewer lines, they're not those responsibilities?
They would be municipal.
As private roads.
We'd have to give an easement.
They'd have to be an easement.
But all private roads, the village just maintains what's, all private roads.
Legend Hollow, for example, there are five, I think five or six private roads off the two main public roads, and those are all easements that we had to give the village to maintain utilities.
To maintain the utilities, but not to repair the road?
No, we're not suggesting repair the road, we're not suggesting plow and sand and salt the roads.
That would be homeowners association would be responsible for that.
This is...
They did lot the road.
These are three simple lots, so we are talking about having subdivided, ultimately subdivided lots, and as Anthony just indicated, a homeowners association would be responsible for all of them.
Including the drainage basins.
Sure, absolutely.
Assuming the ARB approves the idea that the McCon House is historic, it didn't really say, is that supposed to be a condominium, build condominium units too, or is that going to be, I don't know, one owner and a rental?
Certainly not one owner and a rental, I think it is. It would be two units and... And Mr. Chairman, I don't think we've gotten to the point of deciding whether there is a way to subdivide that or whether we would have to condominiumize that building. So for the time being, it's two different saleable units, and we have to figure out whether they're HOA or condo.
Did any of the plans you submitted, I don't recall seeing, have the subdivision lines in there?
Yes.
It's in there?
Yeah, because I didn't recall seeing it.
I haven't seen any.
I figured you were waiting on that till things were...
We didn't submit it. We didn't submit it. It was the second to last sheet right before...
Oh, okay. I'm not saying in there, just...
Actually, the idea was just preliminary, start getting a thought about how this might be broken up.
Okay.
And just, well, right at the very outset, so everybody understands, our notion, if you just gesture to the affordable on the top, so we're talking about subdividing that into two different lots, but because they're stacked, we would have to condominiumize within the building, so we would have two saleable separate tax lots up above. I didn't realize Anthony actually has drawn McCon Stern, as you guys were just asking, that does look like it's capable of being subdivided.
That's the being...
Yeah, that's a detail.
Wait, oh, I see, so you've got the line around there, just around the house?
Well, you may have to change that a bit too, because then there's more parking. The parking for one property is on the other side.
So we're dealing with that with easements, we're thinking about that. I need to, with these people...
You need to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. These people would need an access easement over the driveway, and these people would need an easement for their parking spaces, but the details we still need to...
So all those areas that are not in like a small brown box?
Right.
Yes.
Are all one lot?
Yeah, the way we broke it up is we did an individual lot for each unit.
Right.
And then we have a separate lot for the road here, that's Lot 27, and then the open space lot is Lot 28, which is all of this, and that works out to be three acres of the 5.8 acres of open space. So it's a substantial, you know, more than half of the site is preserved in open space.
We can figure out whether we need to de-restrict that or put that in some type of protective conservation easement. Obviously, you have the Broadway buffer, the Ivedeck buffer, but there may be some other things that we want to look at so that nobody touches that.
Again, as I said, you'll be getting comments from our landscape architect on ECB. I think one of the comments that our landscape architect made, which I think is something worthwhile looking at too, is in the Broadway buffer, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of overgrown and a lot of vines growing up the trees in that buffer area, and it might be worthwhile to do some sort of reforestation and habitat restoration in that area too that would make those trees and make the vegetation there more attractive, which I think is just a plus not only for the village but also for the owners of the site.
Take a look at that, and I would be remiss, and Trustee Kehoe would probably castigate me for not telling all of you that we are taking special effort to make sure that we protect and preserve the Benjamin Franklin marker that's embedded in. You don't want to wake anyone.
No, you're not supposed to tell anyone where it is.
Actually, on that, I wanted to.
We had to go out and find, it wasn't easy to find. You had to pay somebody for finding it.
I heard about it, I said, oh, where is this thing? And everyone said, I can't tell you.
Dan Brown is working on a whole new book that revolved right around that marker.
Yeah, actually, I was just going to raise that point, could you may at least have it on one of your plans, what you're, what you're doing, yeah, because I want to make sure that doesn't get lost.
I'm not.
That was one really important.
I was saying it, but I'm serious, I, you know, we know, we know we need to do it, we promise we will do it.
Put it on the plans.
We will, we will make sure they do it if he safeguards it.
Preserve the Benjamin Franklin marker.
We have photographs of it, so if anybody wants to see, we don't tell you where they were taken.
Don't be out of progress.
A hundred dollar bill.
Any other comments from any of the board members?
I'll just say that the, based on the, the video that we saw, if that's the kind of scale and scope and bulk that we're talking about, that's going to help a lot. So I'm just hoping that that still stays with the character of what you're proposing.
Absolutely.
You liked the scale, the scope, and the bulk?
No, I liked the way that it was, it was treated.
Good try.
Thought you said you liked it.
Must be a lawyer.
Any comments from the public? No?
We okay to go to the ARB?
What?
Yes, I.
Well.
We all okay with it?
For the limited, for the threshold.
Good.
And that, Jan, yes, hold on a second. Did you have a comment? Sure.
Green infrastructure really is important to.
Just state your name for the record.
Jan Blair, Environmental Conservation Board. Green infrastructure really is important in this case because of the open space that we're trying to retain there. We, our concern from the ECB was, our concern from the ECB was the trees, and I think there were sixty or sixty-plus trees coming down, some of them were seventy-two inches, I think, and mature trees that, if you can, you know, look at those trees. I just wondered also if you're going to be doing any rain gardens or swales or anything like that to, for green infrastructure rather than, I mean, bio-retention swales?
Yeah, you know, we looked at doing rain gardens for individual roofs, the issue with a rain garden is it can only treat a very small area, you can't contribute more than a thousand square feet to a rain garden, so you end up with these little, you know, they don't even serve one whole roof of a unit. So that's why we went to the bio-retention and the infiltration practice, which are very similar, but they, they're made for, rain gardens work better for just an individual house on a lot, and you get a multi-family project like this with, you're really better with larger practices.
Okay, well, just to, you know, encourage, encourage more of that.
Right, and these are green infrastructures by the DEC manual.
Right, 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 I understand, okay, that's just, that's really our main comment.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, come up to the microphone, please.
Wait, you're on television now.
Just state your name, please.
Thanks, Carolyn Joy. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to comment now or that you ask. I live in Richmond Hill, and this reminds me a little bit of Richmond Hill, so I took a few notes. We don't have sidewalks in Richmond Hill, and I think the idea of sidewalks is probably silly, not necessary with children or not. But we also have an hour of roadway, we tend to go in one direction, the cars don't, when you have cars going two directions, then you are avoiding people and you're competing for the space. So I think the idea of not worrying about sidewalks, but working on a slightly wider road that fire trucks can go up and down, we don't allow parking on the roadways at Richmond Hill. So I could see where you'd have a problem with fire trucks also, if people are allowed to park on the side of the road because there's not sufficient parking for guests. So my only thought is, I'm not having twenty people over, but it's always a nice thing to have guest parking, anticipating two or four cars per family is probably not, you know, reasonable.
Well, have you found that to be an issue at Richmond Hill?
Yeah, we, we have parking below by the pool that people can use, we have, we probably have five spots below, four, five, four, that's eight. We probably have thirteen guest spots or so, I could be overstating it.
You also have spots in the center away from the units.
That's what I'm saying, those are the guest spots, there's about five across from my.
Then that seems to be sufficient.
So everybody has two garages and two spots, and then there's probably five, ten, thirteen guest spots. No one parks on the railways, you get fined if you do, there are no sidewalks, people, the cars go in one direction. I think, and it just feels like this is going to be a little bit like Richmond Hill, I think it's great, I think, you know, it's a good development.
Well, how often are those guest spots taken?
They're always taken. Yeah, they're always taken, they're really, really convenient. The other thing.
Well, they're not completely taken, they're in and out, and different, different areas are.
Workers coming to work, guests staying overnight, visitors, parties, all of that.
Well, then what happens overnight, are they mainly empty or are they mainly full overnight?
If, well, okay, I have a teenager, so my, across from my spot, it could be filled until one or two in the morning, but, you know, not necessarily overnight, they are utilized a hundred percent. And then, but I, it just, it works, and I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Charlotte, I float, I live on Station Road directly, you know, the property and the discussion. I have come to several of these meetings, and I have heard of all the arguments for and against, I have no objection to the project as such, but in no time has the problem of possible water runoff onto our property been discussed. And that is of supreme concern to me, because I've lived through a similar situation as president of an organization that owned a property in a shell, where an adjacent property may, and I hear these words again, demolition, uprooting of trees and so forth, changing, in other words, the topography of the area. As a result, we lost a tennis court, we lost other parts of the property, we had to sue endlessly to have some partial adjustments to make. I have lived in this village quite a long time, very happily, and I really would not like to see something like that happen, and yet, I have been assured that this will be taken care of, I take that with a grain of salt. I fully believed that the builder would like to create that, but I have seen no guarantee of that. And I don't know if the planning committee has a will or can take this into consideration, I cannot be sure this is not.
Well, I think we will be looking at it, our village engineer will be looking at it, the building inspector will be looking at it during construction too, to make sure that the adequate erosion sediment controls are in place, so that runoff is directed in the way it's supposed to go. And that the village engineer will look at the entire development and the stormwater runoff to make sure that it is directed into the stormwater basins.
Yeah, until this point, a construction plan with drainage hasn't been required to be designed. In the next cycle, this process, they're going to provide us with details of how they're going to protect your house and the neighborhood.
I'd like to hear that.
No, it's required, and they know they have to do that, and in the next few months, you'll see and hear and be able to take a look at it at the library or online.
When the previous builders who wanted to develop an assisted living facility up there, I had several, I think there were engineers, site planners, et cetera, come and visit us and point out in detail, we're going to put a catch basin here and something else there. I haven't heard anything like that, you say that is so.
It's forthcoming, it's to come. Now, remember, they're not going to address the drainage of the aqueduct, because it's not theirs.
They will not do that.
They will not be addressing the drainage issues you have that are coming off the aqueduct.
Well, I'm not on the aqueduct.
No, and.
I know it.
No, I know that, but the drainage coming off of it, there's a lot of drainage running along the aqueduct.
That does not concern me.
Okay, so I want to make sure, I just want to make sure you know that that's not part of there.
But there's no project.
That will be thoroughly, you'll, you'll see, probably not two months, three months, you'll see that.
Wait, in a few months' time, you think?
Yeah, we can't, we can't approve it by a staple until we see that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Now that I think, well, okay, so you have, you have the authority then to go to the ARB for the threshold, I think the other thing then is for secret purposes, I guess we received an EAF, and I had some comments on it, and I think the village attorney had some comments, I think we'll incorporate those comments into the EAF. And then we would like, I think the planning board would declare itself as lead agency for environmental review on the project.
Right, Pat, the only question is whether you want to go through the changes to the EAF, I have yours, I have mine, I can just communicate it to them.
I think you can just communicate it.
Okay, you guys aren't going to fight with me, you'll take them, okay, so.
Then I would just entertain a motion for the planning board to declare itself lead agency for purposes of secret for the Denardo development.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so. All right, so then we'll prepare the final EAF, and then that will be circulated for.
Thank you all for your patience, and we look forward to going through the process with you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think there's no other business before the planning board, so I think the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.